Call the meeting to order, please stand for the flight's loop.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call roll, please?
Counselor Bowlin.
Here.
Counselor Furlough.
Here.
Counselor Grizzle.
Here.
Counselor Reese Camp is absent. Counselor Souter.
Here.
Counselor Seinhebel.
Here.
Thank you very much. And before we get into our business, if you are interested in talking to the council and speaking, we have a little bit of a new procedure tonight. We have these little yellow cards, they're right up on the table there by that yellow sign, and if you'd fill one of those comment cards out if you want to speak, and return it to the clerk there, Kim, and she will take care of that, and then you'll be called up when you're ready to speak. Okay, first up, we have the consent calendar, we have the agenda for tonight, we have appointments for the library advisory committee, we have the arts commission, the planning commission, and the trees and trails advisory committee, all board minutes. Council minutes, September 11th, 2019, regular session, and we have a right-of-way dedication shum in the corner of River Drive and Mountain Drive.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and to approve the consent calendar, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent calendar is passed. And first up, we have a couple proclamations. First is extra mile day, November 1st, 2019. Whereas Lebanon is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service, and whereas the city of Lebanon encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas our community chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow community members. And whereas Lebanon acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2019. Now therefore, I, Paul R. Aziz, Mayor of Lebanon, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2019, as Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day, not only to go the extra mile in his or her own life, but also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or the world a better place. And next up, we have Founder's Day 2019 Time Capsule. Whereas with a population of 247, the state of Oregon officially recognized Lebanon as an incorporated city on October 17th, 1878. Whereas, our community has grown and changed over the past 141 years, and it's important to remember that our founders who were pioneers and paved the way for the city that friendliness built. And whereas, their hard work and efforts were the foundation of this important rural community in the Willamette Valley. And whereas, to commemorate this important day in Lebanon's history, a Founder's Day ceremony and placing of a time capsule will be on October 17th, 2019, at 5:00 PM at the North Side Welcome Monument at Academy Square. And whereas, the time capsule will be opened on the city's 200th anniversary on October 17th, 2078. Fifty-nine years. Now therefore, I, Paul R. Aziz, Mayor of the city of Lebanon, do hereby proclaim October 17th, 2019, as the city of Lebanon's Founder's Day, and encourage all citizens to celebrate Founder's Day by attending the ceremony and time capsule placement at Academy Square on Main Street. Next up, I'll turn it over to Ron for an introduction.
Perfect. So Angela, I hate to do this to you, but will you stand back there? So Angela Soulsby is our new human resources director. She was hired.
Yay!
And started, what, September 30th? And it's good to have her on board. We're gonna have lots of learning experiences from her. I can tell already, she's got lots of experience, and she attended her first staff meeting yesterday, and we didn't run her off, so.
That's shocking.
Yeah, I know, that's what I thought too. Thanks Angela.
Thank you. Next up, we have the annual risk report, presented by Barker Yule's Insurance.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We have our annual review of your risk management and losses for the city of Lebanon. Current to the first page is kind of a five-year summary plus the current year of your insurance premiums. We did have some substantial increases in the property values this year, primarily due to public works facilities coming onboard that were under construction, so those have been added to the schedule. City County Insurance Services provides an actual fiscal appraisal of all your property. It was done about two years ago, so it's due to be done in another three years, so we make sure the value is adequate to cover any replacement of any damaged buildings. We also had a little bit of an increase in your mobile equipment coverage, covering public works and parks equipment. So that's all included in there. We have an excess crime policy that provides a total limit of $300,000 for any crime losses, not only dishonesty, but also includes wire transfer, computer fraud, anything that's more of a crime nature is covering the city of Lebanon for that. Tort liability, there is an Oregon tort cap, but we have provided a $5 million limit. The tort cap's currently a little above $2 million, but we have a $5 million limit because there are some federal cases that can go over the Oregon tort cap, so we cover it at $5 million. We have a $25,000 deductible, so the city of Lebanon's responsible for the first $25,000 of total claims in a policy period, and then CIS pays anything over that. That's billed to you as the claims are paid. Auto liability, similar, deductible is shared with the auto liability, so you're not having to pay two $25,000 deductibles, it's kind of a shared limit, still with $5 million limit. Auto physical damage, we cover the fleet, subject to a $500 deductible for comprehensive inflation. We have increased, last year, we increased the cyber coverage up to a million. This covers breach costs, anything you're doing with cyber, both first party for the city of Lebanon, if they're hacked or extorted or whatever, you have coverage there, but also third-party liability, if somehow personal information was breached and given out to another party, you have a million dollars to cover any losses due to that. Public official bonds, we have two bonds in place, one for the city manager that was bond canceled as of 8/29/19, and the yellow premium was the earned premium from July 1 to that date. Currently, we don't have a bond in place, you don't need one for interim city managers, you just need one once we have the new city manager. The public official bond is a little bit different than the crime coverage, because it covers not only theft, but lawful performance of duties. So it's a broader coverage for the finance director and for the city manager, that go above just stealing money. It's, you know, did they perform the duties, so it's a broader, almost like an errors and missions coverage type of thing that we do for the public, for the mayor, for the city manager, and the finance director, so a little bit broader. We have volunteer accident coverage, cover the volunteers. In the past, we used to have them covered under workers' compensation, but that kind of skews the workers' comp losses, so we put a volunteer accident policy in place to cover those volunteers. And then underground pollution tank policy, we have a couple of underground storage tanks in the city. Next page, property, you've had no property losses during this five-fold policy periods, so it's been good from that standpoint. Again, the premium jumped up this last year primarily because of about, close to $20 million of value added to the policy. On page three, you'll see the tort liability premiums and losses. Unfortunately, the trends aren't as good as the property, you've had losses over the past five-year period of time. I would say that in the 1516 year of the 80,000 losses, you have about 35,000 is a reserve for future payments. It's a claim that was reopened, and so that's pending litigation, and so there's still some reserves on that claim. You have, 1617 has pretty significant reserves on that, 160, about 144,000 in reserves on a police claim. And the 1819 year, you have about 15,000 in reserves in that year, and all of the 1920 is in reserves, or 30,000 of all reserves on pending claims. We can't get into individual claims at this open meeting, but Mr. Candy knows all the details, and can ask me if he wants to. Claims by department on the next page four, again, kind of shows, you know, skewing the police department primarily because of one claim, but again, public works and administration is. Turning to auto liability, you had really only one major loss in the last five years. In 1516, you had a claim where a piece of asphalt fell off a truck on I-5 and damaged a car and injured some people, so that's, you know, the major claim in the 1516 year. On the next page, again, it shows the police and public works have had the bulk of the auto liability claims for the last five full policy periods. Auto physical damage, again, significant claim in the 1415, you had a total loss in a police car, you had a suspect trying to flee and broadside of the police vehicle in total, so you had about a $30,000 loss in that one year. Everything else has been fairly minor as far as the losses have gone. And again, police, because of the, primarily the one vehicle, has been skewing the physical damage. Unfortunately, police vehicles, when suspects try to flee, they use the police vehicles as something to ram, so it's not ever a good thing to be in a police station. So on page nine, it just kind of summarizes over the last four applied policy periods. You know, you average about nine claims per year. The incurred claims cost, which include loss reserves, are about $92,000 a year, with the average cost per claim $10,000, $10,050. And the below kind of shows the number of claims for each year. 2015 was the most, 12 claims, and then 1819, all was around. Moving on to workers' compensation, workers' comp has been a pretty good change for the city of Lebanon. When we started in 201415, you had an experience mod of 133, which meant that your losses were 33% more than the standard cities your size in Oregon. So we got it down to the low of 80 in 1718, it's creeped up a little bit in 1819 at .87, but still well below the one average, so you're still doing well from that standpoint. And you'll see the premium reflected in that, in 1415, your premium is almost $145,000 over that, now it's $76,000. So again, that makes a significant difference to your budget by controlling losses and making sure that your employees are going home, you know, injury-free at night, so it's all good. When you take a look at your red and blue graph at the top of that page, it kind of shows, in 141516, your number of claims exceeded what was expected based on your payroll, but since that time, your losses have been under what is expected based on the amount of payroll. So they take a look at expected losses for $100,000 payroll, and that's how they factor these numbers in SAFE provides. Your incurred costs have kind of gone down, in the 18 period, you still have some reserves pending on those claims, so not all of that's been paid out. So of the 48,000 incurred loss, only 13,000 have been paid out, so you still have some reserves on pending surgeries or other rehabilitation fees for workers, and that's kind of skewing that number currently. But overall, your frequency has been getting better, and the, again, if you take a look at claims frequency, you had 19 and 21 in the 14 and 15 year, and then last year, in 1718, you had .05, and in 1819, you had .08, so it's, you know, dropped significantly compared to where you were. So again, claims, the number of claims are going down, and the severity of claims are going down. Last graph we'll go through is kind of the, it's kind of the hodgepodge of claims by department. So if you take all the workers, by their class code for workers' compensation, and divide them up, this is how they're split out. Public Works, we were able to dive deeper to show, you know, Sewer and Water Suites Road, because that's the class code they were working in when they were injured. Senior Center has a significant claim, and the manager says it's small. Any questions there?
Based on the size of our town and other cities that you represent or cover, are we looking pretty good?
Yeah, you're trending a lot better. I mean, I would say we did have, you know, some challenges early on with workers' compensation. We were with City County Insurance Services for workers' comp, but we were able to move you to SAFE and save $100,000 that year just because of the premium savings, so, and since you've been with SAFE, I think SAFE is able to provide more hands-on for workers' comp than they do, you know, they handle a number of entities in their pool for workers' comp, but they just can't give the individualized service that SAFE can. They have more boots on the ground to help. You know, City County has one rep for this, for like a five, six county area, and so it just doesn't pan out, where SAFE can have, you know, one person almost dedicated to your account, you know, through return to work issues, you know, working with doctors to make sure they get released properly. So it has made a difference. You should receive a dividend this month from SAFE Corporation, and it's about 24% of what you paid in last year, significant return. So again, not only are you getting better results with SAFE on workers' comp, but you're getting returns too.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Angela, you can leave us annually, thank you.
See you next year.
Yep.
Okay, next up, we have the public comment section. Citizens may address the council by filling out a testimony comment card prior to speaking, handed to the city clerk. Each citizen's provided up to five minutes to address the council. Council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city clerk will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. And first up, I have Cassie Cruz on the list. Come on up, Cassie.
I was told I was the last.
Oh, you were, you were first.
I know. I was by tray, so it didn't count. So everyone has in front of them the awesome news that has come Lebanon's way since this past week, which was Lebanon had won four awards at the Main Street Oregon Conference last week. It was a wonderful time, it was amazing to see how many people had tried to surprise their award winners. I don't know if we really pulled one over, Deila, but she was being tricked. She asked if I knew anything about it, and I said, "No, I did not lie to you," so, which was a good feeling, because I didn't talk to her. But we were able to surprise the cowards, they were nominated as, or they won, Business of the Year. And then, of course, Deila, our former president, was nominated for Board Member of the Year. But to kind of backtrack a little bit, I just want to touch a point, it says on this paper, but conversion really has just come a long way in their summer concept series, which I love being a part of with LDA and as a community member, and one way we were able to be a part of that was, we were a sponsor for one of the series, and we were able to partner with another nonprofit, because I had asked. I could raise money for an organization, that's great, but to raise money to be able to help an organization that impacts our community even more greatly was important to me and the board, and so we had chosen Jack Street Youth Services. So your sponsors were able to choose their nonprofit of choice, and then raise funds in whatever fashion they chose to support that nonprofit. So they had touched on that, and the Oregon Main Street Conference had, and just what they've been giving back to our community outside of entertainment and food and everything else, and just the partnership that's held. And of course, Deila was recognized for the outstanding leadership that she always has, and I will say that directly to you, Frank, just her leadership and what she has, and that she is a woman of force, and that she kept, and it was recognized that she kept that organization, or our organization, going for so long. And of course, the city of Lebanon, which is a huge thank you to everybody, was noticed as best partnership for the downtown association awards. And I will read this out loud, I know you have in front of you, but I just like to read it. And this is from Sherri Stewart, who is a state coordinator for the Oregon Main Street. She had said, "The award winners serve as inspiration to the community across our network and reflect some of the highest levels of revitalization success. We are so inspired to see how our historic downtowns across Oregon are coming to life through creativity, passion, and plain hard work of the community members." And that is a huge testament, and everyone, you have a picture in front of you of all everyone there, and there's just more than individuals, there's a lot of different stakeholders, you know, we have our city represented, we have our police department represented, you know, Deila serves in so many other different facets, and then just the cowards as business owners, and it is beautiful to see what we may come together, because we do it every day, and it's not just in the council chambers, it's just what we do. And so of course, and not last but not least, because I have been not wanting to say this word, or this acronym forever, the best design activity for education was known for the transsum window exposure re-vibration Kickstarter, which is also known as Tork. So that was great to hear someone have to say that, other than myself, out loud, and that is just one way that they, that Katie Henry had highlighted what we have done as a community in creating those opportunities for building owners and business owners to come together and to make a project happen, to revitalize that downtown. So it was wonderful to be sitting there and to keep hearing Lebanon and seeing people's pictures go up and watching the award winners go up, so it was a great time that we had. And then I had the opportunity to learn some great things for our community, that goes along the lines of the lighting, since we have the trees, but being lit up downtown. I went through that, sat through a session that talked about seeing downtown in a whole new light. So now I've learned a lot more about lighting than I've ever wanted, and understanding the six points of lighting, it will make your downtown to be welcoming, that, and also, I sat on another session about art, which is great, because I sit on the Art Commission, so it talked about art downtown, so, and trying to incorporate those two together. So please, in the future, expect that you will see a wonderful presentation on art and lighting, and I don't know what's gonna happen, it could have an asterisk tied to it, who knows, but you're gonna see something really cool that will benefit our community. So I'm excited to share more with you guys, it's going great, I don't think I have much, too much time left, but anyways, if you have any questions about that, or anything else, I'm more than happy to, or anything.
Congratulations, this is awesome.
Oh, that's everybody.
To see that many awards, it's really great.
It was exciting to see. It was awesome, it was even more exciting to see everyone else and then come out and like, "Whoa, wow," you felt like you were like the best, like, all-star team, or something like that. And it's honestly, and it was funny and very humbling too, because every time someone congratulated, like, "Oh, you did a great job," like, "Oh yeah, that was..." I wasn't, this is the face of today, that was the face of yesterday, so I had, it was fun to be able to redirect that and to honor that, so, anyways, I will let you guys go, I'm all set and read. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassie. Okay, next up, Joe Knight.
So, I guess the reason I'm here is customer service. I bought a house, I've lived in Lebanon for 10 years, wife and I bought a new house a year and a half ago. We had an RV that we had just bought, and we bought the new place, and I was trying to figure out where we're gonna put it in to put a cover in, to keep it sort of alive. Anyhow, I went down to the permit office with no preset notions, here's my size of my RV, I need to put a cover in. And at that time, I was given a map with some dimensions on it, and a color picture of the property, which had a yellow line on it, which I did not know what bit it, and I was told, "Well, you gotta be 20 feet off the driveway, you gotta be 20, you know, 15 feet off the sidewalk." Assuming that, and the comment was made at the time, and the property line, well, I just assumed the sidewalk and the street was the property line. So we went home, and we measured everything out, and the RV didn't fit, and we went and traded off the RV on one that we had measured out after four times measuring it to see if it fit. Then I went and got bids, and tried to figure out what I could afford. Given what I had for information from the permit office, we thought we had it, and we couldn't afford it at the time. So we saved up money, and borrowed money, and thought we could get it through this year. Then all the hassle happened. I went in, and my builder went down, and he was submitting paperwork, and we got to that point of getting the permit, he had already ordered building materials, and the gal down there says, "Oh, well, that would never fit." I knew that from the first time I stopped, that size building won't fit in there. And it's like, well, why did you say something then? And then I was told that the numbers that I was handed weren't the real numbers, that was for tax purposes, and I needed to go to the county and get the D numbers, which I did, which matched the numbers I was given from the county, from the city. And it's just been a bigger and bigger and bigger hassle. The problem is, it's me, I don't build in the city all the time, I mean, it's probably the last building I'm gonna build, as long as I live in that house. And we had downsized as our final house, and it has ruined the house for life. Because what, I went down there, I've been down there like 15 times now, and just this week, I get a pop like this that they pulled out of the drawer. Why didn't I receive that the first time I went down? I got a solution last week of, well, we could put up a pull barn with an awning on it and park the second car under the awning. And I was given paperwork, and I read it cover to cover, and it said RV, but nowhere in it did it say a car. And then, four days later, I get a call that said, "Oh, it's not legal to park the car under the awning, you can't build that." But the first building that we put out, I told I couldn't build the building because there wasn't room to park the car there, because I only had 18 feet, not 20, because my property line didn't go all the way to the street. So the first building, I can't build because there's not enough room to park the car, and the second building I couldn't build because I can't park the car there. Yet I went four blocks down to a house that was put up last year with a carport identical, the house layout identical to mine, double white, with a carport on the end. And when I brought that up, I was told, "Well, you don't even know if it has a permit." And I'm like, "You tell me you built a house in town with a carport with no permit?" What, public record? I pulled the public record, there's a permit for it. But I don't wanna get bogged down in the details, but what, in my side, when I went down there, originally in a good mood, all happy, we were gonna do something, I need, if I had been given this paperwork, and the picture with the yellow line, and saying, "This is your property line, you're gonna need to know it, if you're gonna build right to the property line, you're gonna have to have it surveyed," we wouldn't have done anything until we could afford it. But now we're $4,000 into trust and everything else, that won't fit nothing, that I'm ruining. And we're on version three of where I can build the deal, the building, and I'm not sure I have enough money that I can even borrow to finish it. And to me, that's horrible customer service, because all it's done is enraged me and ruined the house for all of my life. And I, it's just customer service. And here I am, I got up at 4 o'clock this morning, I went to work, I gotta be up at 4 tomorrow. I work hard to have something nice to last into retirement, and it's just a shame that the customer, if I had that many customer service at my job, I wouldn't have a job. That's, that is what this, this board here is putting out to the community, just the average citizen, that that office should be helping. Not going in and finding out 12... I found out 12 trips later that it had to have a concrete driveway. It was the first time it was brought up. It was the first time it was brought up. I'm like, I already have gravel there, why would I need concrete? Well, it's a city ordinance, how am I supposed to know that? You would think that, if she had given me this paper on the very first chair, I would have known that. You would think there would be some kind of package, and I realized a matter of time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Do you want to address anything?
Well, Kelly and I have talked about this a little bit, and I think we have a little bit different version of how this, this was approached. I think our customer service in this case was, was adequate, and probably above and beyond. I think they've looked for ways to help him and get this done. It's, really boils down to our building code and our, our development code, and meeting those requirements. So, I'm not sure what more, I haven't personally dealt with, Mr. Knight, but, and speaking with Kelly, I mean, we've, I don't know what more we can do without doing some kind of an exception, you know, of our code to allow this. As far as the paper, I'm not even sure what paper that was, I don't, I don't know what it was. It's pretty clearly laid out when they go up front to get this information, so, I, you know, without that, I don't know.
It's important to point out that our planning department, though, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not, the burden doesn't lie on planning to design your project for you to meet building codes. The burden of planning is just to provide you with the avenues to do it the right way. And you have to have a designer, or an architect, or an engineer, or whoever, surveyor that come out, and find all the right places to do it, and they're familiar with our municipal codes, and that's their job, to make sure that your project meets code. So, I really, I can empathize with Mr. Knight, but I can't understand how that's the city's fault, or the planning counter's fault, in that they simply provided him with the applications for permits, and the information of what to, what to do with the permit. The burden lies on him, or the homeowner, to do the due diligence, to know where your property line is at, and to have a contractor who does that for you, so.
Yeah, we would, we would not want to get into the business of designing everybody's secondary structure on their lot. On the development side, typically, your engineer, or you would have somebody go out and do that, and survey that for you, so you would know right out of the gate. The information, it looks like it was provided, so, with that, I don't know what more we can do.
I had an accessory building added on to my property last year, and I had to do the footwork, I had to get surveyors to find out where the property line was, because we wanted to put it at the back of the property, and it was kind of a, a lot of extra work, but it was something we had to do, because I, I didn't know the rules, and I'm not a developer, a builder. And so, I went through that process, and again, I just followed each step, but it, you know, you actually have to get a surveyor, you have to have a contractor to be able to do these kinds of things, so, it's unfortunate situation. I wish you was here, you could have at least heard the discussion.
The thing is, every time you change your plans, you mentioned coming back with two or three different alterations, every time you change that, that can trigger different requirements and different things, so, it's, it's tough to navigate, I can understand that.
Yeah, and I, I think they do a pretty good job, I mean, I've been up there when they've, when they've navigated people through that, I don't, I haven't done much planning or building, but I've been up there when they've navigated people through that, and I don't see the lack of customer service. I think they go above and beyond to try and figure out ways to make people, you know, to allow the building, it serves us no purpose to do it any other way, so.
It's not an easy process for the average person.
No, it's not.
Because it's just, building is not, it's not. Okay.
Was there an engineer or surveyor involved in this project?
Uh, you know, I don't know if there was or not, I have no idea.
I don't think there was, from the description he gave, I don't think there was a, it was, he was designing it himself.
Okay, next up, Brian Davis.
Good evening. So, I'm Brian Davis, I've lived in this community, you know, since 2007. So, I'd like to talk to you guys about crime, and the crime that we're seeing. Charge you to, a lot of different things. A lot of people in this community have taken notice. We've, after Facebook posts that was posted yesterday, my understanding is maybe not quite accurate, involving a case that's still under investigation. The street that I live on is on the edge of town, centered but edge of town. And we typically see a lot of bicycle and pedestrian activity coming out of a wooded area that's back near the old miller. A lot of thefts, we have a lot of vehicle break-ins, one of which has occurred to my next-door neighbor within the last couple of weeks, one of which I foiled personally last night, further down the street. Had a conversation this evening with, having discussions about this and figuring out the rest of the avenues available in neighborhood watch, but I would like to know what else we have available. Very common to see, opportunistic. Walking with backpacks and pedaling with carts. Pretty much, everybody knows what they're doing. Crimes of opportunity. Problem to solve, I know it's a difficult time to catch any act. Some sort of recourse. By a secure community.
Brian, can you move that microphone just a little bit closer, please?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That, I can hear better, thank you.
I'd like to know your guys' thoughts, and like, the resources that we as a community have available to us, other than neighborhood watch. I rephrase that, neighborhood watch. I would like to see you guys take charge of getting the community involved heavily in programs, so that we can get this problem solved.
I guess I'd like to throw this back, other than neighborhood watch, which is an incredible program, I will tell you, I came from a different community in 2000, and on the street that I work, excuse me, work, live on, comprised of three blocks. And I personally went down to every single block and every single house and created a neighborhood watch in our, in our area. So, I know it works, because I know I get out there when I see people cruising down on their bikes in my neighborhood. So, I would think, obviously, that's definitely one, but what, I'd like to challenge you, when you ask us what is out there, have you done some research to say, hey, what about this in other, in other communities that you've seen that has been successful?
That is a very good question. So, I am not blessed like so many of you guys to get as much opportunity to actually do in this community. For instance, I'm stuck with, and I see the crime in Portland. That's a little actor of, one or the other. When it comes to being involved in the community, I don't get the opportunity as much as I would like to. But frankly, I'm not here as much as I would like to be.
I didn't mean, I mean, let me interrupt you, I didn't mean for you to be involved, do you know of other programs and other communities that you think could be beneficial for us?
I don't, I wish I did. I'm, I'm asking for the resources that is happening.
So, I can speak to this, I live on, off of South Main subdivision out there, Heather Estates, and we built there in 2005, in 2005, we had a break-in, came in, stole stuff out of our home, and we saw a lot of what you're describing, too, the midnight movers, and, you know, they're out there roaming around, and I call them the walkers, you know, because they're just out there strolling in the middle of the night, and now it's even in broad daylight, right, they're, they're a little more brazen. Couple of years later, maybe '06, '07, you keep seeing this, you kept, we had more break-ins in the area, and so, I started a neighborhood watch in my neighborhood. And I don't, I don't think people understand the power of neighborhood watch and the effectiveness of it, it really made a difference. I called Della Johnson, and I said, "What can we do?" She said, "Oh, it sounds like you're my next block captain," and so, yeah, I was. And we went to every house in our neighborhood, and we handed out little flyers, we had our community meeting, and it was amazing how much the little things that you can encourage people to do, like turning their porch lights on at night, having their exterior lights up, being observant, being vigilant, and calling PD when you see something. I can't tell you how many times I've heard our police officers say, "Don't hesitate to call us, call, we want you to call us." Everyone thinks, "Oh, I don't wanna bother the police," or, "Oh, this is nothing." I do it all the time, and I'm a huge jerk in my neighborhood, but it wasn't two months ago that...
No, we all do that, Jason.
You know that, Bill. Bill, you were there. Two months ago, we had a biker and a walker, and they were tucked into a little corner behind, and I was, I was actually coming home to get something from work, I forgot at home, I saw him, and I rolled right up on him, and said, "Just so you know, I'm calling the police right now, you don't belong here." And maybe call it profiling, maybe call it over-aggressive, but they didn't belong in my neighborhood, and I made, I let them know that, and the officer that showed up, let them know that. They did nothing wrong, they had every right to be there, but you have to make it uncomfortable enough for them to move on to somewhere else. And we found that to be really effective. I know these guys do tremendous proactive policing when they can, but they don't, they're, we're outnumbered, man. I mean, you, you walk around, and there's just, I was out last night, I went to a fire, and after the fire, I was listening to PD's radio, and they said, "Oh, we've got, you know, this complaint of fireworks over this area," so I cruised over to help them out, because they were just jammed, busy. And I roll up on somebody with a torn apart bike, and he's shoving it into somebody's car, and they're, they're, I mean, they're stealing stuff left and right, I get it. But if you just look out your window, and you close the blinds, or you lock the door, it doesn't do any good. You gotta call, you gotta report, and you've gotta get your neighborhood active in that. And I, I just got the gist when you said, "Other than neighborhood watch," that you were kinda poo-pooing neighborhood watch. So, but, okay, good, because it's a, it's a great thing, and other than that, and some proactive policing, I don't know what we can offer, because I tell you right now, if we had the resources to put on more officers and more patrol, we'd do it. We don't at this time. That's something we fight for every year, come budget time, it's difficult, but, other than that.
Would you like to give some comments?
Ditto, ditto. A lot of things that we talked about outside, and I appreciate you talking about the one case that's on Facebook, it's, a lot of things aren't as they seem. So, I appreciate you having that conversation with me. There are a lot of other things we offer, other than neighborhood watch. Della Johnson is an expertise in this field, in fact, she goes over the entire United States teaching crime prevention. And I know you have reached out to both me and her, and I know that she had emailed you back and encouraged you to come in and have that conversation. I'm always, we enjoy that kind of conversation, come out, do a ride-along, get to know the officers. And it does take, the power of the community is what is, it solves a lot of crimes, because we do rely heavily on the community to tell us where the areas of concerns are, because we, we have only so many resources out there. But if, if you're calling and saying, "I'm having all these issues on, on my street," we'll dump resources over there to help prevent some of those issues. So, just kinda along the lines of what they said, neighborhood watch is a very valuable tool, and like you said to you, I think we have 42 or 47, I can't remember, active neighborhood watch groups out there. Some of them have Facebook, some of them communicate, but it's a, it's a very, very useful tool. It gives you guys some reassurance, you can rely on your neighbors, and they're watching out for you, you're watching out for them. It also lets people, rather than chasing them from one place to another, it lets the, I call them bad people, suspicious individuals out there, let them know that they are being watched, and the more they're being watched, the more they're gonna feel uncomfortable, the more they're gonna go to another town.
I would like to charge you as council. I believe you're not, you're not watching. One of the things that Chief Johnson and I discussed is areas that have any who would watch, making it uncomfortable for perpetrators, and they use it to different neighborhoods with it, and they bounce back, and the police officers end up just kinda chasing them around, which, if it was a perfect world, there would be enough solid response within the entire community, not just the individual neighborhoods. So, I would charge you to, finding this completely off topic, based off of your annual risk report, what I do for a living, for the city of Portland. So, if you guys ever find you need a, if you're free to talk.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Cindy Petner. Did I say your last name correctly?
Yes.
Is the mic on?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know if it is.
Yeah, it sure sounded low. There we go. Thank you, Brian.
I actually have four comments or questions, so I wasn't sure if I should fill out four cards.
One card, that's one card.
But my first one is the big talk, and everybody was displeased with, was Mr. Mark's severance package. I don't need to know the reason he left, none of us do, but I think we do need to know, why was the severance package given? And it was, when I did the timeline, looking at from the time he was hired, back in a newspaper article, it was only mentioned that a severance package would be given if he was terminated by the city. There was nothing in there about if he resigns. So, my question is, having accountability from the city council to even agree to something like that, who reviewed the contract to say, "This is okay"? And taking, you know, just honesty, transparency, and accountability in that whole process, and all the processes that happened here. So, that's one, I think the citizens need answers to. I was told it was not due to any type of criminal or that type of action. However, when I looked at the agenda for the executive session on August 29th, that was listed, and there is something that was gonna be discussed, obviously, it wasn't public. So, we just have to keep assuming, if it was, if he did something that was not a benefit to the city, he should not have been given $96,000. And I understand severance packages also includes benefits and sick pay and all of that. I worked in the HR field for, in another life. So, that's one. The other one that I had, because I started thinking, is the city council doing their job? What, where does our money go? And as I looked into this, and I went back, and I want, I know you won't have the answer today, but back in June, there were several times of overestimating a project, or overbudget on projects. It was the monument, the water treatment plant, and then, so those are two items that were overestimated. We weren't given dollar amounts, we should have had specific dollar amounts. This is what was offered, or what we were gonna pay, and this is what was overestimated, and then why? And then who approved that? That wasn't covered in the minutes, and it's something I think the city needs to know, is somebody falling down on the job and not keeping track of things? Is city, is the city gonna be known as a place to come and do a job, bid on it, and then go over costs, because they'll pay it? And that's not good for the city. And then the third thing was, $117,000 that the mayor wanted to contribute to the alcohol. I didn't understand some of the wording on that, I don't know why we would give them $117,000 when there's so many other ways to use that money. One of them would be the, for the homeless, for the heating rooms that they have. There's all kinds of... There's all kinds of other ways than working out a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, also considering that we also just gave away ninety-six thousand dollars. Or nine, ninety-six thousand, yeah. So those are my questions and comments. And I think I'll be watching the city more closely and asking the city council to do more closely watching.
Well, don't go anywhere, we'll give you some answers, because we got them.
Oh.
Yep.
That's all part of the game here, you ask and we answer, that's kind of the little transparency part of it, yeah. The severance package.
You want to do that?
Handle that?
Yeah.
Kept looking for somebody to look at me and make sure I- Yeah, so the severance package, it, it was part of their contract. We use a recruiting firm. If you talk to the recruiting firm, it's standard, especially because we're recruiting nationwide, you're going to have somebody uproot themselves, boot to community. And so having a severance package of, actually, six months was a, a pretty mild type of severance package as it relates to recruiting either city managers, or school superintendents, or positions of that nature. You're going to see that, basically, if, when, when we go into this next recruiting period for a city manager, you're going to see the recruitment team, or who-
Leave, so they're going to get that anyway. Because he did not take a lot of vacation. So, that part. And on, on the part about the treatment center, that money is from urban renewal dollars. That is tax dollars that can only be used to develop that part of town. And it's in a specific area, so it's not money we could use for anything else. It can only be used for development. And so that money was given to them to be able to help basically offset costs of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So it's not like we wrote a check out of the city budget from taxes that everybody paid. It specifically was money that is set aside for taxes in that area. And it's called an urban renewal district.
Same for the, the money for the monument, those were restricted funds that could only be used for city improvement or tourism-type, things to encourage people to come and to visit, or to view the monument with the art piece on it. So those restricted funds can only be used for a very narrow channel of, of items. And so the city has to pick, okay, where are we going to beautify, where are we going to advance? We couldn't use that for homeless, you know, camps, we couldn't use it for, you know, street maintenance. The Oregon State Budget Law prohibits that. So, we're kind of tied by budget law on a lot of things like that. And then I don't remember your last question.
Oh, it was kind of along that line.
Oh, the overages.
The overages.
Yeah, actually, during our meetings, Ron Whitlatch is, is our engineer, and he'll sit here where you're sitting, and he would report to us that, oh, we're working on the treatment plant, but we had these problems, and here's what happened, and that's why it's going to cost us more. Do we want to go forward with it? So, we actually get the option at that point, and it's always in our meetings. It may not be in the final report saying exactly what happened, but it, it's in all of our public meetings that we talk about that.
And that's what I have to go by, is the agendas.
Sure. And it's important for you to understand, too, that the project itself didn't go over budget.
We build contingencies into all of our projects. So, but the way our municipal code is written, such that we need to come to this body and request approval if we spend, you know, if, if we have a change order that's over a hundred thousand dollars. So we were very cognizant of that, and, and brought all that stuff to this body, it's on record at that. Is it possible, then, in the minutes, to include the dollar amount? So, me and other people-
It's on the budget, so you can go in, in the, in the budget and see-
Could we add that to the action report?
That's probably the one document I didn't look at, is the budget.
It's a big one, yeah.
Yeah.
We have that action report that shows all the things that happened, kind of, and I really like that. And I think that might not be a bad thing, that we could do maybe overages if, if there's a, a project that changed or something.
And also, the, the meetings are videoed, and you can go to our webpage and watch the actual meeting.
I did, I watched the YouTube one of nine eleven, I haven't seen the minutes come out yet. But I noticed that Mr. Boland had questioned the attorney on something, and that then picked my what is going on.
The last thing you talked about was the, you, you asked about the improper behavior, the discipline of an employee, the statement-
That's what the agenda, the minute-
So, that's a generic Oregon law that has to be read, it has to be posted, and it covers a very broad array of infractions or discipline subjects. So Trey has to read that, and it covers everything. So that's, that's a legal requirement for executives.
Yeah, I actually didn't get that, that's what she was referring to. So, yeah, it's a specific language that is set forth in the, in the ORS to hold an executive session, and a lot of different things fall within that specific language.
And if you want more detailed stuff, you're free to come down to City Hall and either make an appointment with the department person who you want to speak to, or if you have questions about projects, we know they're, they're daunting and they're big projects, but our, our staff are fantastic. And even though they're very busy, they're always happy to meet with citizens and answer those questions for them, so, and I know that firsthand.
And have more input when we're doing the budget. It's a very complicated process, but that comes around in May. We go through budget season, and very few people of just your average citizens are engaged in that. And we would love to, we would love to have more people be engaged in that.
Do we have openings right now?
What's that?
Do we have a planning commission opening, or? I thought we had a-
There's two commission openings.
There's two on the planning commission.
Couple of planning commission openings, so if you're interested in this kind of stuff-
And the budget committee also usually-
I have served on the planning commission ten, fifteen years ago.
Okay.
So I was familiar with some-
That means you're done, right?
Yeah. And I'm just a regular citizen that served on it. So I wasn't a realtor, I wasn't a builder, I wasn't anybody but Joe Blow out there.
You learn a lot doing that, that's-
If you have budget questions, or questions about how things are being spent, make an appointment with us. We would be more than happy to sit down with you. In fact, we wish more people would, because then we get the right information out.
And thank you for coming with these questions, they're fantastic questions. And I wish more people would come to these meetings with these kinds of questions, instead of going to social media and assuming all these horrible things. And there's usually answers for most of this, and we're willing to answer that, and we do it here publicly.
Well, I, I did post on social media my concerns, and there was a hundred comments.
Oh boy, I bet.
My hopes were that if we have something to say, we need to come down and say it, and not just post it.
Appreciate that.
I think that's all then.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any other cards, was there anybody else? Okay, scene done, we're going to move into the regular session. Okay, first up, we have to award the A Street sanitary sewer contract, Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This project, we had intended to put this project out earlier this year, but due to the bidding climate, we backed off of it a little bit. It finally came to light that we needed to do it sooner rather than later, based on some of the problems we're having over there. You can see we got six bids. You can see what we were estimating it would be, based on the bidding climate. We were, we were way off, which I guess in this case is a good thing. Yes. But it turns out the Pacific Excavation, who we've worked with a lot, came in at two hundred fifty-three thousand. And we would recommend to award the project to them.
Any questions?
Recommend awarding to Pacific Excavation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to award the contract. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Number two, Storm Drainage Master Plan Contract. Ron Whitlatch again.
So this has been a long time in the making. We, we've sent out a statement, a request for statement of qualifications, oh, back probably six, seven months ago. Got very little response. We actually then called three, four different firms and said, hey, would you be interesting providing us an RFP for doing our storm drainage master plan? And we had two maybes, yeah, we'll look at it, and we had one, yeah, for sure. And then one that backed out, they said they were going to do it. What we ended up with was one, from David Evans and Associates. So, we've been working with them on our Westside Interceptor study. So, very familiar with their work, very confident in their work. So, that was, that was a good part of it. I wish we would have had a little bit more in terms of, you know, you don't ever base this on dollar value with an engineering services.
Why is that?
I think, to be honest with you, people are absolutely busy. And this is a, is a, we could have went out of state probably and looked. I know Albany had some people from Washington do theirs, up, up beyond Seattle. But to me, to have that kind of interaction, I would rather have somebody close. It doesn't make sense to, even with technology, they need to be boots on the ground here. So you've got all that travel time, you've got stay time, and it just doesn't make sense, so.
And so many communities are in our position of an aged system where everybody's kind of having to do this all at once.
Right.
Where is this company based?
Uh, they've got offices all over, but the, the firm we're dealing with is Portland.
Okay.
Yeah, they're right out of Portland. So we'd originally, they came back at about three hundred thirty-two thousand, which wasn't a sticker shock to us. We talked to them a little bit and said, hey, you think you can get it down below the three hundred mark without doing too much? We want a, we want a robust plan when we're done. But there were some things that we felt like on the capital section. They planned on doing a bunch of capital evaluations for us for different projects. And in my opinion, that stuff is good for about the day that it's written. And then after that, you're, you're guessing at what the economy's going to do. And, and so, if as long as we've got the project in front of us, we can always come up with a, a ballpark cost on it. So we kind of cut some of that stuff out of it. We had originally set this to use system development charges, but Matt and I attended a meeting, and rather than ask for forgiveness, and instead of permission, we now have to ask for permission to use SDCs, I guess. Actually, we found out that, that you can't use SDCs on a master plan, other than what the growth allocation is for. We had intended to use over fifty percent to fund this. So we went back to the budget, and you can see how I broke it out here. We, we have that money budgeted in the Storm Drainage Utility. We've got the money budgeted in the Storm Drainage SDC for that twenty-five percent, so that we maintain our requirements per Oregon statutes. And then Matt and I sat down and looked at the different urban renewals that we have, our big ones, the Northwest, North Gateway, and the Cheetah Lake URD. And by area, I basically said, well, these areas contribute X percentage to the city, and compared it on that, and that's, those are the numbers that we came up with there, and a proposal to use. The money is in the URD, however, it has not been allocated to spend. So if we were to spend it, we would need a budget amendment. But I don't think that we're going to need a budget amendment, because I've talked to the consultant. This is over a year-long project, and I think what I would rather do is just budget for this in the coming fiscal year, so that we don't have to do another budget amendment and just move it forward that way. But I just wanted to lay that out, I hate to get involved in a contract by, by some chance they came to us and said, hey, we're going to go at this with everything we've got, and we're going to be done in six months. I want to make sure that we have the ability to pay for that. But it doesn't look like that's going to have to happen that way. So, with that, I can answer any questions about it, but I would recommend we move it forward, and along with the funding strategy that we've got laid out in place, and head down that road.
Okay, so I'm new. So this money's, I'm assuming the two ninety-six?
Uh huh.
So this is just for them to orchestrate this whole plan of how this will happen, and then we have the funds to make it happen?
Yes. So basically, what they're going to do is they're going to evaluate our entire system, whether it's developed or undeveloped, look for areas that we have with staff where we're, where we have deficiencies, and then look at our existing areas that are not developed, and come up with needed projects out in the future. This is what we follow for all development, so similar to the transportation system plan, similar to our wastewater master plan. They're looking at the city as a whole globally, and providing the big picture infrastructure network in order for us to move that forward. But yes, it is budgeted for, and that's what this plan will get us. Our, our, our plan now is from nineteen eighty-nine.
All right then.
So it's, it's a little-
There's been a couple changes since eighty-nine.
And, and we, we don't have a lot of deficiencies, but there, we, there's areas that we know. We're also obligated under contract, or under intergovernmental agreement with Albany, to review areas that drain to the canal and come up with alternatives, even though we know there aren't any. But we'll cross that bridge when we get there. So, it'll all be part of the plan.
Move with agreement with Dale Evans and Associates.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to prove the contract with the Evans and Associates. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Number three, authorization of wire and ACH transfers, Matt Atkins, Finance Director.
Morning, Council, good evening. Well, sorry about that. As technology has advanced, there's new opportunities for us to take advantage of to save time for our employees, and also make things a little bit more secure in ways. In doing that, it comes across as wire transfers and ACH payments. Currently, we do some of these by paper. It requires us to go find somebody, and occasionally, it's hard to get the right people in the right room to get things done. And we currently also somewhat pay payroll through an ACH transfer. It's direct deposited in people's accounts, it's the only one that we currently have access to do that with. We'd like to get to the point where we can send a file to the bank that then pushes money to our vendors, that we then don't have to send checks, we don't have to pay postage, we don't have to do all those extra steps. This agreement that we've, that I recommend that we sign is from the bank, Key Bank. It gives us permission to set it up. It has proper controls in place, so that one person can't log in, put in what they want to do, and then also approve it to have the payment go. It requires two different users to log in, have multiple people approving that process, to make sure that we're not just sending money to anyone.
Has this become an industry standard?
I think for the most part, it is industry standard, we're just a little behind the times.
Is Keybank our primary bank?
Keybank is our primary bank.
I'd like to make a motion, allow staff to set up the ACH and wires transfer through Keybank.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize wire and ACH transfers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Welcome to the new millennium.
Thank you, Matt.
You didn't even bring us a giant tablet up there for us this time.
I know.
But a real book.
Ironic.
Update on the feline nuisance, presented by Kelly Hart.
The grizzle issue.
And I have to say, before she starts, I had, I had a citizen contact me last week about this, and did not know that we were even discussing it, so I let her know. I, I don't know if she's in the eyes, I don't think so. But I did discuss that we will be talking about this, and she complained exactly what the gentleman that was here last week, last month, was talking about. And again, unbeknownst that we were doing anything, so.
I don't know if I have all the good answers for you, but I'll try. So, good evening, as we've already introduced, we're going to be talking about cats and what they do to us. So during the public comment period at the September meeting, a gentleman spoke regarding what we would call as cat trespassing and cat nuisances on his properties, and would like for the city to investigate how we can help him in that situation. And at the conclusion of that, the council directed us to take a look at some items, research what other cities have done, and potentially find some solutions and suggestions. So that's what we're here for tonight. So we'll talk about kind of what the existing regulatory framework is for the state and the county, what our codes say, and then the research that we did for other counties and cities and their licensing requirements. And then we tried to get a little creative and come up with some other options available. come up with some other options available, and then ultimately get your guys' direction on this. So, the ordinance...
You're killing me, stop.
The graphics are spectacular.
I tried to make it entertaining. So, the state requires for any city or county that has a dog control program to require licensing of all mature dogs, which is generally defined as a, a dog that's six months old or has their, their adult teeth. There is absolute silence in the state regulations regarding cats and the licensing of cats. For Lynn County specifically, they follow the state rules, they have a dog control program, which means that there's a requirement for licensing, there's absolutely nothing regarding cats or the licensing of cats. And fun little fact, in 1980, the city signed an agreement with Lynn County for them to provide us with animal control services, and that agreement very explicitly says it is for dogs only. For our code, in 1980, when we signed the agreement with Lynn County, we adopted ordinances that would allow them to do animal control services in the city. Our ordinance has largely been unchanged since then, it is very regulatory in terms of dogs, it changed in 2000 regarding updating some new nuisance designations, again, only for dogs, and it does require the licensing of dogs. What it doesn't do is say anything about cats, or restrictions on cats, the number of cats, where cats can be, whether or not they have to be licensed, or tagged, or anything, or spayed, or neutered, so they don't really provide any of that. With the agreement that we do have with the county, if we wanted to provide these cat services of, of providing some sort of licensing, or control, or enforcement, we would have to go about the process of amending our agreement with the county, or creating our own animal control services, which I'm sure Frank would love to speak about. So, let's talk about the county a little bit more. We spoke to the county in preparation for this conversation, about the prospects of regulating cats and cat nuisances. Their anecdotal response, which was fun, was that the county currently does not have any facilities to house impounded cats, they do not have the current staffing to try to deal with the large influx that would be associated with cats. And they also think that there's generally a position that there's a significant issue in regards to the enforcement of cats. That largely comes from a couple of different things, just like with dogs, in order for an enforcement action to occur, you would have to have a picture of the enforcement issue occurring, you would have to be able to identify the cat, and you'd have to be able to identify the owner. Anecdotally, that's a lot easier to do with a dog than it is to do with a cat. There's the other issue associated with it of only a proportion of the cats that actually roam the streets are owned by people, they're considered at-large cats, where they're actually a pet, but they're allowed to, to go into other neighbors' yards and mess around in their gardens as they see fit. But there are stray cats, as well as feral cats, that are also in the mix, and there, there's no enforcement action associated with that, other than trapping them, and ultimately, either putting them in a pound, or, or euthanizing them as well. And so, an enforcement tack, unless you're talking about trapping, isn't really something where the licensing of a cat would have an absolute effect. And so, instead of enforcement, what the county does is they work with the Safe Humane Society, they work with other nonprofits to provide animal services for taking in the pets, or the, the stray cats, and they also provide for low-cost spay and neutering through those services. So, their attempt is population control, rather than removal of the population in its entirety, or enforcement upon private property owners as well. So, we also didn't just look at Lynn County, we looked at other cities to see what they do, as well as other counties, we researched a total of 13 counties. I'm gonna be a broken record here, they all follow state law, they all regulate dogs, only two of the counties allow for voluntary cat licensing, that voluntary licensing is more associated with helping find lost pets, rather than enforcement and regulation. And there's only one county that actually requires cat licensing, that's Multnomah County.
Wow.
So, they require cat licensing, however, we did speak to the county, they say they maybe have about 50% of all the feline pets are actually licensed, they don't think they catch nearly all of them in the licensing process. They do also have a complaint process basis, where you can file a complaint for either cat nuisance, the messing up your property, defecating on your property, and also cat trespass, but this is very similar to what we talked about before, they would need to, the person would need to have a picture of the cat doing the thing they're not allowed to do. They'd have to identify that cat, and it's on the onus of the property owner or the complainant to actually identify and provide contact information for the owner of said cat. I asked them how many complaints they've actually gotten, to the point where violation notice was issued within this year, they've had one throughout the entire year, where that complaint basis has been successful and resulted in a violation notice. So, there's that. For cities, there are a couple that were identified that do have their own animal control programs, only two of them that I found had actual designated staff for animal control, the rest of them was put within the, the police department itself. And the city of Eugene actually has an additional contract service with the county, and Eugene actually has a budget of about a million dollars that they put towards animal control services, and 2,000 of that million dollars is spent for spay and neutering of cats.
Wow.
So, there's that. So, seems to be that all of the counties are doing the same thing, most of the cities are doing the same thing, everybody's following state law, which is to regulate dogs, but there's really no actual regulatory framework for cats within the ordinances and the counties that we've investigated, and we, we looked over a big swath of, of the area that we live in. And so, what we wanted to do was not just look at what everybody else is doing, but are there other resources available, and other options available? So, there are a number of resources available that private property owners and private residents can participate in. They can catch a stray cat or a feral cat with traps, and there are low-cost, or in some cases, no-cost spay and neutering that is provided, you just have to set up an appointment, and they'll take care of it for you. And then it's just catch and release, again, it's population control. For our local one in Lynn County, it's $45 to spay and neuter, there's one that's located in Salem called the Feral Cat Coalition that does it for free, you just have to set up an appointment. But the interesting thing that we started to, to look at was, instead of trying to keep cats out of individuals' property and regulate the cats that are free roaming, looking at a person's private property and sort of solidifying and shoring up their own private property if they don't wanna have the cats on it. If you start just researching keeping cats out of my yard, there's dozens upon dozens of resources and websites out there available that provide either low-cost or no-cost options to the property owners, anything from putting coffee grounds in the garden because they don't like the smell, to pine cones and eggshells, to, they actually have cat repellent products and fences that you can put up, and so on and so forth, there's a wide opportunity that...
Off-balls. I've tried a lot of them.
Yes. So, there, there's, there's options that a private property owner can pursue on their own, and so, an option that the city can look into is an educational resource, rather than looking at the enforcement side, we can develop either something on Facebook, social media, a flyer, putting together a city website that says, these are things that you can do to try to address the problem on your own private property, if council so chose to do that. The best example that we saw was through Multnomah of what they've done, they have a plethora of options that you can consider as a private property owner to pursue, and they provide links to certain products that would be associated with that. This is obviously through their animal control website, but since we don't have one, we would have to figure out where to put that in the city, if that's what the council wants to move forward with. But this is at least something where a private property owner can, can take actions to shore up their own property. For city action, if you're talking about doing enforcement, you're talking about having to either put it in-house on our own, which will be an exorbitant cost, or trying to renegotiate the agreement with the county, and they've pretty much flat-out said that they don't have the resources, so that's not really an option either. So, this is at least something that the city can do to be proactive about it, in our opinion. So, with that, I welcome conversation or direction, we have a couple of ideas up there for you, but you can let us know what you'd like us to do.
I thank you for the information, and we, Council, it's been a few years since we've been through this information, and it's, there's no good, I know so many people who don't have a cat, but there's a lot of cats in the neighborhood, and so, I just leave some cat food out, which means you now have cats, because those cats own you, that's not, it's not okay to just do that, and then, and then, and I say, who pays for what happens if the cat is sick? Who pays for that? Well, that's not, it's not my cat, then it's not my cat, it's my cat when I'll give some food. So, you, there's no way to track down who owns these cats, and I'm, maybe you can tell, but I'm not a big fan. But from an enforcement standpoint, I don't see how we, there's so many things we don't have the resources to do, but I love some of these proactive things about giving, making sure that we can, for a very low cost, supply the tools, here's some resources, here's some numbers you can call, here's some things you can do yourself to try to discourage the cats. I think that's a, that's a great idea, and probably the best we could do.
I agree. I, I think that there's just no enforcement possible, we don't have any of the resources at all, and Frank doesn't want them. They're, they're dealing with the dogs, and that's enough work for him extra, anyway, so...
Which I appreciate, by the way.
Yes. And I really like the idea of the, the public information campaign, I think that would be the way to go. It'd be really easy to incorporate a section on our website, yeah, I, I think that would be, just makes the most sense, 'cause I just don't see any other way.
I concur.
I just, I don't know, you know, the gentleman had, that gentleman had a dog, too, are any of the solutions on the previous page also gonna help deter, or are they gonna harm its dog? I, I mean, I, I just, I, going back on that site...
So, I mean, there are things that are specific to cats, I, I will say, I, I don't know dogs very well, so you guys might know better than I do. Apparently, per the research that I've looked at, 'cause I was looking at cats, not dogs, is they don't like certain smells, and I'm not sure if that crosses over with dogs, too, where they don't like certain smells, but, so, some of the things are associated with smells, other are associated with texture, cats are finicky little things, but dogs seem to be willing to roll around in just about everything, and so, they may not have the same problems as some of them. And some of them like the more expensive option of the, the high-tech, where it's cat fencing, where there's certain things at the top of the fence that cats aren't gonna be able to get over, it's not gonna be comfortable for them, that would affect them directly, but not necessarily the dogs, and so I think that there's crossover, I don't think we're gonna find every solution, and I don't think we're going to be able to solve everybody's problems, but at least providing resources and letting them know that there's other websites, and there's Google searches that you can do, and there's resources available, and, hey, I'm not an expert, but here's a list of phone numbers that people are experts to, at least that gets them somewhere, and some resource where right now, they feel like they don't have one.
His other piece, too, is that, according to him, his neighbor has like, you know, nine cats, or 10 cats, or something, and there's nothing, because it would be a licensing thing that this body could do, is that correct?
So, if you were to start putting in our municipal code that there's a restriction on the number of cats, in order to enforce that, you would have to have them identify and license the number of cats, and then if we're gonna start licensing the number of cats, we have to have an enforcement option, which falls into cat patrols, and the county's not gonna provide that, and I don't think Frank wants to provide that either.
I, I just wanted to make sure I had the, the correct knowledge on that.
They just need to have my dog, I don't have cats in my backyard, though I'm a cat fan, I have my own, but they are inside cats, so that's why I solved that problem. Pardon me?
I am not a cat person at all, there, it's on record. You all know now.
Well, thank you, I appreciate all the effort that you did, that's a lot of work, and again, very detailed, and I think that helped, it, it seems like it's pretty unanimous, I don't think that there's any movement we should do, other than probably a public information campaign, I think that would be the best.
Can we reach back out to that gentleman that came here?
Do we have his contact information?
He emailed me directly, I can, if he forwarded it to me, I'd be happy to.
I must've known you weren't kept.
I guess so.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna take a 10-minute break.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Just noting that the lights outside are not on, anyone know how to turn those on?
Okay.
Has nothing to do with...
Lights outside?
Yeah.
Crime prevention by environmental design, just saying.
Look for a light switch, couldn't find one.
Could've done this before we started, but, you know, here we are.
Sorry, I, I got distracted there. Give you guys a, kind of a quick update on the homeless coalition, you guys remember, I think it was a few months ago, Officer Albany's, who was the head of the coalition, came and gave a brief report on that. At that particular point in time, we thought we had, had identified a new leadership that was gonna be taking over the coalition, and run with it from that standpoint, however, that did not work out. So, as it stands right now, Dave is still in charge of the coalition. What I can tell you is, it, it's, what, what is needed for the coalition really to continue and flourish is for the police department not to be the head of that. And the reason being, isn't the fact that we don't care, per se, but, the reason is because a lot of the individuals who, you know, are, are in need of the help, don't necessarily want the police coming at, at the front of it, they, they more or less see us as a authoritarian, we're gonna make them follow rules, et cetera, et cetera, so they don't necessarily wanna open up and really listen to the help that is out there. So, with that all being said, I, I gave you guys a kind of a brief synopsis, really, if, you know, what, what, what has been done and what is currently being done, a lot of it is partnering with all the other organizations that are out there, and kind of bringing them underneath one roof, and approaching the very complex issue of, of homelessness. That has, that has taken place, we have, I think it's, it's called AST, which is Adult Health Services Team, they have come together, they are still communicating, just not necessarily under the coalition name, I guess. But, you know, obviously, with, with, when this all started, when we partnered with the AST, the idea was to get a, basically a group of individuals, one from mental health, one from the home, from, to provide homes, I can't remember the name of it, and basically a combined resource to go out to camps and, and physically go out there and talk to them. We tried that once, again, with law enforcement being at the head of that, and we knocked on tents, but no one would wanna be home, so... But really, what, what is needed, from the standpoint, from where I'm looking at it, isn't necessarily, again, the police being the, the head of that, what really needs is, is a member of the community who has passion, who has the connections to really take, not necessarily control, but take the lead on the Lebanon Coalition for it to flourish and continue.
Frank, wasn't there a, wasn't there a group of churches and organizations that were, that were integrated into that process?
There was, but I don't necessarily know who those individuals were.
Was the Lebanon Pesterol Association involved in it also?
They were, Dave, Dave was a part of that, I think, I believe, yeah, Kyle's here, he can kind of, but yeah, Dave was a part of that, and, you know, was contacting those individuals.
We need somebody, Kyle. Yeah. Just saying.
You know, and that, you know, and again, I'm, I'm happy, we are partnering with, I can't remember his name, it works, the soup kitchen, the church right there.
Him from KJ.
Well, no, KJ's a part of it, too, but.
He was the former.
Sean?
Sean.
Casey.
Yeah, Sean Casey?
Yeah, well, we partnered with him, but I'm talking about the pastor, the, the.
Oh.
My camera, his name, but we are partnering with him for the warming shelter. So actually, that, that organization, the church group is there, is going to be taking that on. Again, the police department will be in the background, of course, assisting where need be, but, and really, that's really what is needed for the coalition, is the same kind of principle, is, is church organizations, someone to head it, and to make sure, and have meetings on a more regular basis, just to more or less check in that these groups are still communicating, still talking, and still trying to address the ones that, that can be addressed. So, at this particular point in time, the, the Lebanon Coalition in itself has become stale. And really, I don't, I don't want it to become stale, I'm more, I want to continue seeing that being more of an active role. But I, again, and, you know, it's just one of those things where the police shouldn't be the spear, the head of the spear on that one. We should be in the background, more of a supportive role. So I'm happy to, to answer any questions, or, or have any, any guidance that you guys have on this issue.
Appreciate the work Dave has done, and you, and, and all the officers. I agree that, I know as soon as a, a blue suit walks up, it, everybody just shuts up.
Yeah, and that's.
Nobody wants to talk to you.
Right. And that's, that's been the biggest hurdle that's been in front of us, even, even for the warming shelter. They see that it's Lebanon police, they think it's a trap, therefore, they're not going to come in. Even when we've gone out in, in plain clothes, they still recognize us as police, which is weird.
Yeah.
Well, I actually support your decision there. I, I just think that we are a partnership in that, and to have our police department the one that's spearheading that, you know, because we at some point have to do enforcement.
Right.
You know, and so we have to also be that, as well as, you know, I'm sure that you know of programs where you can partner up with, you know, some of the community members, like, well, we have a community, we, I apologize, Corvallis has that community consortium, so they would call us, the police would come and get blankets, and as we're patrolling along, and it looks like someone needs blankets, coats, or gloves, we would have them in our cars, and we can hand them out. So those things, we were able to do, and I think that's a kind of a great way of kind of breaking the ice. But I, I totally agree that we should not be in charge of this program.
Yeah.
It just, it doesn't work.
Yeah, and, and I know Dave is still very active with, with the homeless population. He still is out there addressing issues and talking to them, but it's even difficult for him to be, I need to help you, but at the same time, I'm here to also cite you, is, is becomes very, he becomes very conflicted on that. And, you know, that's not really the message that I want to deliver to, to the ones that are in need of help, that we're, we're going to help you, but also we have to issue all these citations as well.
Dave's still focused on parks?
Yeah. Dave, Dave, Dave is, is a man that, you know, I'm very thankful, grateful that he came to work for the city of Lebanon, and under that position, he has many, many hats that he wears. One of those is, you know, he, he patrols the parks, and you can see the, the difference and the impact that that, that has made. We still have our issues from time to time, but really has made a very positive impact on the parks themselves.
I can tell, from the times before he started doing that till now, the parks are much more family-friendly, so you would have, you know, a mother and her kids, who may not feel comfortable taking her kids to Ralston Park, whereas now, she, most of the time, and I, and, and you can't prevent it all the time, but most of the time, it isn't necessarily an attractive place to loiter and cause trouble.
Right.
And do your drug deal, or whatever it is. So I do, do send back appreciation to, to Dave for that. But yeah, I agree, we just need to find some way to drum up the, the passion, to find a group that's appropriately passionate.
Right.
In the right way to, to, to go out and help people with the assistance sometimes.
Right.
Sometimes you might feel safer with an officer there, but.
A lot of it is, is, you know, getting, you know, drug and alcohol, mental health, and those that can address, finding low-income housing, and those are the type of individuals who you really need out there, addressing people with police in the background, to say, you know, to, to assist them.
Something happens on here.
Correct. Yeah, but not to be that first person that they see as a uniform walking up. So it's a very complex, complex issue and situation. You have to help the ones that you can, and, and the ones that don't want the help are the ones that we see consistently not doing what they need to be doing, so.
Does it seem like we're at the point where everyone thinks that someone else is doing something with this, and really nothing is being done, so therefore, we need to make it known that this is kind of splintered apart, or that this is ready for a transition?
Yeah, I think that's exactly where we're at right now, is make it known that we're kind of, again, stalling or stale, and.
Haptal, as far as.
Yeah. We just need some freshness to it, to the coalition itself, one more focus for Lebanon. And, and again, we, we thought we had someone identified, and this was going to be a great partnership, but it just fell through and didn't work out. And unfortunately, we see a lot of that, where we have someone, they're excited, and then it falls through. Because it, it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
It is a lot of work, and, you know, it takes someone being very, very passionate, and have the, the time, and, and knows, has the resources, and so forth.
Kyle stopped making eye contact, so I'm going to say.
Yeah. He's hiding back there. Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay, next up, number six, hold on a second, I'm page, okay. The council informally appointed Ron Whitlatch as acting city manager when former city manager Gary Marks was placed on leave. This was extended when Marks was resigned. Council should formally appoint Ron Whitlatch as acting city manager effective August 15, 2019. Along with the increase in responsibility should come an increase in pay. It's recommended that $1,000 per month be added to Mr. Whitlatch's salary. And staff recommends city council make a motion to appoint Ron Whitlatch as acting city manager, and increase his salary by $1,000 per month retroactive to August 15, 2019. Any discussion?
Did, did, can we, I'll second if we can discuss.
Yeah, I was going to do discussion first.
I'll second it, so that now it's up for discussion.
Okay.
Is that the official rules? Is that, is that amenable to Mr. Whitlatch? Does he feel like that's fair?
I'm not asking for more money, that was, that was recommended. We're moving forward, things are working fine. We've delegated things out to our, our team. We will be just fine, and that is, that is fine with me, moving forward. Yes.
Any other discussion? Been, been moved and seconded to appoint Ron Whitlatch as the acting city manager with $1,000 a month, retroactive to August 15. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. And thank you for being willing to step up, Ron, appreciate it. Next steps in city manager recruitment process, Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is kind of a synopsis of what we talked about in our work session, I don't even remember the date. Oh, September 25th, I put it in here. Perfect. So basically, what we landed on was, out of the three options, was to have Prothman complete the process. We kind of put together a group, an informal group at that point, which I think this, this would probably formalize that group, which is on the backside of that. Timeline on this was begin the recruitment process back in, or to start it in January or February of 2020. I've since talked to Prothman and discussed our, our tentative schedule, just to kind of get an outline. Sonya Prothman thought that this would be, timing would be great. She didn't think that us moving forward now, she said it'd be very expedited. They would typically wait till the first part of February to start advertising something. So in the meantime, I would, I suggested to her that, or asked, rather, would we put the contract together now? And likely, we would put the contract together now with our group that, so, so we would get together as a group, formalize what we want in the contract and the timeframe, and then bring that back to the entire body to vote on, that, that contract. It's not necessary, because it's well within what, what we're authorized to spend without council approval, but does council want to go through that approval process, or just move forward with the contract?
I think it should come back, because it is the city manager.
That's, I want to make sure, before we just sign the contract.
We do have time.
Yes, we do have time. So with that, we would probably, you know, try and set up a meeting with, with our, the council group, you know, the mayor, Karen, Michelle, myself, and, and the other folks that are on there, and start working through that process, I would suggest sometime in November, so that we can get a contract put in place by December. And then from there, start the process in January. It'd be likely, I think, with, based on the, the schedule she gave me, we could have somebody, it would fall in line with, like, end of May, first part of June, which would get us through the budget process, and have everything kind of squared up, and ready to go for somebody new to come in and do that.
Sounds good.
Do you guys like Prothman through the fire department?
Yes. We found them to be equally as good as they were last time. We use them here, good communication, brought back a good pool, and they have a good grasp of the Northwest and what people want in the Northwest for their department heads, so, yeah.
Biggest thing is contacts. I mean, they've got the contacts, they know what to target. I mean, we could figure it out, but I think, I think that's one of the biggest things they can bring to it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so we won't pass a resolu, or a motion tonight, right? Is that your?
No, I would say that you pass a motion for the committee and move it forward this way, and then we'll bring a contract back. That, our group will develop that contract, put all the ins and outs in it, and, and bring it back that way.
Okay.
So you are looking for a motion?
Yeah, just, I think to formalize the group.
Yeah, Tracy says we don't need a motion. Yeah, we, last time we talked about.
We talked, we've talked about it, but it hasn't been memorialized. We talked about it in the work session.
Then, yeah, I think you, you would want a motion just to form it.
Just to form the group.
Just to form the committee.
Okay.
I move that we form the committee to, to go over the Prothman contract as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to move forward with the committee that's been presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ron.
Okay.
Managers' report.
I won't go through much of the details, a couple of things that, you know, unless you've got questions on any of this stuff, a couple of things that weren't in the managers' report. We are looking at a feasibility study with the city of Sweet Home and the city of Albany for a regional biosolids facility. There's potential out there, all three communities have got the same issues, and not just ours. What we want to look into is, is, is it feasible for the three of us to combine capital and make a regional facility that we can haul all of our solids to, rather than land apply, and create a, basically a fertilizer or a compost at the end of this? Also want to look at, you know, things like who runs it, would it be better to have an outside group run it? So we're going through that process, the state's giving us 25,000, and each community's going to do 15,000 towards us, and look at it as part of our wastewater. If, nothing else, it will give us some ideas on what we can and can't do if we do our own thing, so.
Thanks.
Just letting you know, we're moving through on that. And I will be out next week, but the chief has agreed to be the guy that, he's, he's going to be the one, so.
He's smart enough to do it.
Yeah.
Are you trying to recover yourself?
Too, a little too late. With that, I can answer any questions. Things are going well, we're moving things forward. We're moving right along.
Very good.
Excellent.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Seeing none, items from council, trees and trail committee update, councillor's resolve.
All right. I told Rebecca that I would cover this for her, since I couldn't remember why it was even on the agenda for her to give an update, because there's really not much of an update to give. So we're, we're moving through a couple of trails grants that we'll probably apply for next year. Those are some of the things we're doing. We're looking at potential of the Albany properties, and if, you know, along the old canal alignment, and then up off of Olive Street, we're discussing those properties with them. The one would tie in with our river park, which may in turn help clean up some of the homeless issue that we have in that area, because there's a section in there that nobody gets to. So we're looking at that. We've kind of postponed any of the master plan stuff yet, until we know, funding-wise, what we can do there, and really, I.
Downtown trees are almost done being removed, and they'll be replaced in November.
Yep.
And lit.
Lit.
In November, too?
They'll be lit before the Christmas season?
Yeah, I believe so, that's what Jason said today, so we're, we're working through that. We got more bike racks from BLT going in, and especially after our discussion today, I brought that up in our meeting today, that the students at, at the college ride their bike a lot, and there's not a lot of bike racks, so BLT's going to go around with our parks folks and, and.
Good.
Start looking at other areas that we can put, you know, they won't say City of Lebanon, they'll say BLT, but I don't, I'm not sure that that matters.
Yeah.
In this case, just as long as we get the bike racks out, so. I think that's really.
Yeah.
We, we changed.
Good job, Ron.
We changed for, to a quarterly meeting. We've been meeting monthly, and we seem to talk about the same things on an over and over again basis, so we're going to go quarterly.
Okay.
Thank you, Rebecca and Ron. And we have an opening on the library advisory committee for a city councillor, and I would like a volunteer for that.
Karen, did you, did I see you raising your hand?
Wonderful opportunity.
The one who never.
Did it work with Kendra?
Though my partner lives at the library, so, okay.
Well, you'll learn.
Oh, you know right where it's at, though.
City manager.
Okay, Karen?
Sure, I would love to.
All right, thank you.
When a plan comes together.
Great.
All right, and next up, I was just going to mention, any of the councillors that could show up to the time capsule, it'd be really neat. We've got some really cool stuff going in there. I've written a letter to the future mayor and, and the community. We've got letters from Representative Springer, I've got the, the chief of police, the fire chief. It's really going to be a fun thing, and it's going to be a neat, neat event out there. So five o'clock, it's only going to be about a half hour, it's going to be a short, nothing real big, and we'll have some tents out there in case it rains, and we got the gazebo. So hopefully you can show up to that, and that's all I have. Any other councillor comments?
We have a new fire chief, as of our last board meeting.
Absolutely.
So Joe Rodandy from, he's in Montana right now, but he was from Pleasanton, California, will be coming up here probably mid-November and getting an early start. He already had a pending offer on some property here in Lebanon, so he was waiting for his contract to be wrapped up, and, and so we can start escrow on his house, and he's bringing his family, and he'll be here mid-November. So it's, it's a good thing for us, we're excited.
He was, he, I, I loved the public process that Prothman did with you guys. And I, he was the one that I liked, and I was really excited about him.
Really personal guy, and very friendly.
Very nice.
Yeah, very community-driven, I think you're going to see him a lot in the community getting involved, so.
That's what I was given, too.
What he wants, yeah.
That's awesome. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay, seeing none, comments from the press. No questions, comments? Next scheduled council meeting, November 3rd, 6:00 PM, or 13th, I'm sorry, regular session,